Welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. Today is February 4, 2020. We have Consul Derby and Consul Rocha with us. We'll start approving the minutes from the last meeting. We receive 10 minutes maybe.
That's right. Summum.
We have 10 seconds, 10 minutes. Does it favor? 0. It's public time. Is anyone here that want to say they have something to say that is not part of the agenda?
It's not really part of the agenda. Do I have to say my name?
Can you please say it?
Netsi Go Mutter Street.
Thank you.
Again, I mean, part of this thing is the residents' speeding concerns, but does everyone here hear about the rollover accident on Clark Street Saturday night? Like within two houses from the church in the corner of Stone Path, a rollover accident. So obviously, we have a really major speeding problem. If a car can... Anyways, it's, you know, it's getting worse for the people who live there.
Speed bumps, all of it.
Tacks, tacks in the road. Sorry, I know it's being taped, but... Yeah, it's just...
Is that sort of... They happen all the time, it's often night too.
The driver, the starter was arrested for those crimes.
Okay. Thank you for the info.
But just, you know, keep bringing this up, you know?
Thank you, yeah.
And walking down here tonight when I... Somebody went through the natsu, the stoplight, when light turned green, was probably doing 50 by the time they got to Williston. A little sports car. And it's like, don't they see the little flashing speed sign? They don't care. They don't see my little sign that I wear, I have in the morning that says "Slow, Students Crossing." Sometimes I lift it up so that people will see. Doesn't matter. Anyways, just, you know, bringing up more things on speed.
Okay, thank you. The agenda is a committee reorganization. I don't know why, but we don't have to do that.
You guys changing something?
Yeah, look, yeah. I don't know why.
Fire roll mark?
I think this was recycled from the last meeting.
Looked like, looked like it, yeah. I don't have any new businesses, so we're going to jump to the continuing businesses. I'm going to start with Consular Rest because he have to go. We're going to start with South Main. We received the information from Nicole. She sent it to me, I'll send it to you too. I already, I think I already did, by email. But if not, I bring you a copy. Definitely they recommend... Yeah, yes. Oh, no, you did? Yeah, but like... You know, we all know how, especially Consul Derby being in his committee for a long time. So he knows, and that's your district too, so you know how bad it is. And the recommendation is to install some traffic lights. Problem with that is that costs a lot of money. As a committee, I think the solution is to make the letter. Been signed by the committee and the trade to get signed for every single Consular. So that we can see if it's good or bad. And DOT and try to see if we can persuade them to see if they can do this on Monday. As a risk.
I just want to say a few things. First of all, thank you for allowing me to go early. I'm not feeling well. I put this on the agenda because of the constant problems we're having there. There was a lot of people in the public making a lot of comments on it. And I know that Consul Derby's committee previously had dealt with it. My goal was to try and see if we could get them to do the kind of study that they've done. But fortunately, the mayor through her office, and I went with her, went up there and acted the same way we will. And because of that, we got the return, we got the data looked at. At the time, they said that they didn't think that the data supported the light. But they did a study and they were wrong. It supports the light, which is very good to hear. Unfortunately, it's costly. Their estimate of $2 million is based on moving holes and realigning the streets. The geometry isn't great. But my concern is that that not be placed on the bottom of the list. I know that DOT for us is working on this. And I certainly don't think this should be placed above that. But it has to be something they have to consider. He's tempted, can't afford to pay for this. DOT should. So I think in your letter, you should write something that takes the data that they said. Because your data does support this. We are advocating that it happen. And the other thing I think that should be strongly reminding them is that that street, South Street, is a major artery from that section of town to the new school. And because of that, we're going to have more bus traffic and more parent traffic. And with traffic increases like that, especially with kids, that to me supports even a morbid urgency to get the light done sooner rather than later. So we want to be put on a list. And I take a letter that the whole council signs, it would be great. I recommend that maybe Omar, I could help Omar put on, put together a letter that at your next meeting, approve it, and we get the consul to sign it at the next council meeting. Because you'll have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah. No. No, because we made only once a month. Tomorrow is going to be the first one of these months, so... But we can, we can, we can make a letter and send it to everybody.
We can, so we can just do a quick meeting before the next council meeting.
We can do that too.
Okay, there you go. You want me to put something together?
Sure.
But I want, that's why I wanted this. I want to include what they're saying in it.
Okay. And if you need more...
It's not a resolution, it's just a letter.
It's a letter, a letter from the...
A council letterhead with all the signatures of all the consuls that agreed. That we need. It's just to say that we need the funding from the state.
And if you need more information, you have to... No.
No, I think this is good. I want to write it to Rich Massey. He's the guy in charge. So I just have to make sure we, you know, I think we have the information.
What are you going to do in the winter for the next meeting?
I guess I'm going to try and, I'll send it to Omar. What do you think? Send a letter and send it to you guys. And I think you guys should edit it or speak... Actually, we can't do that anymore. So we put the letter together and just say it looks good. If it needs editing, we won't be able to submit it to the council. You'll have to do it at your... And I would suggest then having a meeting 5:30. Is anybody on the appointments committee? Because they always... So now we can't do it.
We can do it 5:00. Or 5:15. It's only, it's only 5 minutes.
But I also, just another thought too is, you know, I think that sending a letter to the state is going to be important. But he did, he kind of gave three paths here. And I think that we should go down all three paths at the same time.
I haven't read that yet.
And so like the first one is that we spent Chapter 90 money to...
We don't, but as a one of theirs.
But, I mean, that potentially is saying, you know, we are saying that this isn't a priority for the city. We need to do this. And I think if we look at the Union Street project, like they're taking those lights out. They're taking them out. So what are they going to do with them?
They're taking them out and placing them like that one?
Yeah, like brand new ones. And those are not old. And those, I mean...
The state likes to spend money.
No, I mean, like I don't think it's that far of a stretch to say...
If you look at this intersection and the width and like the...
It's not that far of a stretch to say these could probably be worked in. We could save, you know...
That's probably a few hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, which, you know, which is cheaper than $2 million. Right? If you can, if you can, if you can get $250,000 off of that, I mean...
Well, I don't know how much I like it.
Who knows?
Yeah, maybe it's also something with the, the lay of post and running on the road.
Well, they have to move the wall because it's too close to...
There's one, yeah, there's like a telephone wall that they would need to... Anyway, I'm just saying, like, we should, we should also send a letter to our DPW and say, this could be a while. If we go with the Safe Roads to School grant, I mean, that could be, who knows how long?
Is that the other route?
That's another route.
The federally roadway project.
Yeah, so there's three kind of paths, but you know, that could, those, those two paths where we don't do it could be five, 10 years.
Well, if we could, we could give them some Chapter 90 money, but given that we never have enough money to pave roads.
Right.
Screaming over the years about our road is going to be a pain. It's hard for me to say, let's take some of that money away. But roads being paved don't create the kind of safety problem that will this intersection.
So anyway.
But again, I, sending these letters to DOT, I think it's not going to hurt us.
No, no, it's good. I think we should send it to DOT. I think we should send one to DPW. Should send one to the mayor's office.
Of course.
Say this is the priority.
In the world, we can include, Chapter 90 money may be needed to leverage their money, the Safe Cities Grant. We may need all that. So...
How does the Matthew D. Federality Road Project have that many?
Well, that would suit the DPW, I'm sure that they would have to...
Well, let me read this and I'll put something together.
Yes.
Send it to you guys and then go with it. It's okay if we don't have it finished by the next meeting. Maybe the first meeting in March is... So you have a meeting like the first day of March?
Yep.
Why don't we just put it on that agenda?
That's Election Day. First Tuesday in March.
It doesn't prevent us from meeting.
Yeah, we can have it.
There's a...
I also, these other funding models are come through the DPW, like the federally roadway projects. And we also want to write a letter to our DPW asking them to help connect...
Send it to DPW.
Like to work with the state to get this funded.
So two letters, one to the state and one to our DPW.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I'll work on the state one. Who wants to work on the DPW?
Be similar.
Yeah, I mean, I think they could be the same.
They could be, well, they could be similar, like we'll just...
Just a little bit.
The first paragraph is different, yeah.
All right.
I'm going to edit.
Oh, all right. Send it to you? We sent it to the Board of Public Works, not just the...
Yeah, Board of Public Works, yeah.
Board of Public Works.
Want to keep adding again until we review the letter?
So I'll send, I'll send a letter out and then at the next meeting, we can edit and do it and then try to bring it forward for the first meeting in March. Perfect. That'll work.
Yeah.
I really thank you guys.
I hope you feel better.
I don't know. This is something I think needed to be done. I don't know how much more specificity I could have put into the request, but it seems to be need for that, so next time I'll be more specific. But at the time, I just wanted it on our radar so we could put pressure on it. We can't talk about things without putting it on the agenda.
No, that's, that's just like the...
And that's the reason we're going to keep adding again now until we get the letter. We redo the letter, so we can say that. So, but we're going to keep adding again. Thank you then.
Thank you, Omar, for giving me the time. Thank you, everybody. I see you, Amanda. See you.
And because I know Amanda want to go home, I'm going to jump to Division 3 extension so that we should give you all the information.
So you should have the memo from the city planner?
Yes, I do.
As well as I forwarded to you the email that the city solicitor sent to this planner. And so to, so as far as I know, everything is approved by the city's assistant.
Did you, did you guys know where is this street and where we're going to approve? Do you have any question? No? None?
Well, we just...
About Division 3 or the process or anything? Because we all, we received everything.
I mean, I came kind of late to the process, but there's many things to be addressed.
From the show here?
Yeah.
So basically, this, at one point, it was a public road and it got discontinued. And so it became private. And so now we're just petitioning that the section that he owns become public again. So we're going to grant a turnaround. He's been a third request in the city because that was when the flowers come down. There was already one up here further. And so it's just going to move it further down.
Did he want that public again, so he didn't have to flower it or?
No, it's, I believe he was asking for it to be public because what he did was he had his house and he had a shop. And he was having trouble selling the property as it was. And so by making this public, we had enough frontage this way to split it apart and create a second, I'm assuming, I believe, I'm not positive. I think that's going to turn into a blessing.
I believe the...
Understood the question, right?
I don't really know off the top of my head.
I think the, when they repress for this, we don't have any option to reject it if they do everything what the city adds to do. So the only thing that we have to say is not...
To make sure it meets the criteria.
By the criteria and be sure that they did.
So it's going to be a proper process.
And they did. All right, I'm ready to, to take a motion to accept Division 3 extension as a purely going.
Second.
I'll take a motion. So who? So again, does it favor?
Aye.
0 to 0. Please. Do all that tomorrow.
I will, I will deliver it to the city clerk's office.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Now, I'm going to go to top of the list. Again, parking is to the table, table it. Waiting for the, for the city report. I'm going to add...
Which one is that?
The patrol because of review on street parking, review on orders. I'm just going to add two. There's a thing that can relate it to the pedestrian safety with the resident's concerns. We do receive an answer from DPW. And they recommend us a few things that we can do. One of them is creating a committee by the council. Two, second base. I think I agree to you. Did I, did I...
We got an email.
We got an email, and it gets a bit...
We need to push a call.
I don't know what I did with it. Yeah, well, we can share this one.
I agree with you, but I just read it. My phone didn't, it's hot.
Yeah, we can share this one. I tried, I couldn't. I mean, we can take a look. So they recommend, yes. I think I make three copies. How many do you have? I don't know what I did with the other one. So they recommend us... For us, as a committee, to do that or the city council can create a committee. And we'll go on that, I think the second option.
You say do that just for the rest of the...
Recommendation for the...
Like identifying common locations?
Well, yeah, to follow the premier planning permission.
Yes.
All these steps. To identify like common locations, something in the meeting.
I like the idea of having a different committee to be at. So that we can, no, because I don't want to do the work. It's because I think we can have people from the committee.
Yeah, on the...
From the committee. And I think that it's going to be better than just us.
And then one place needs to trap common measure.
Yeah.
I think we need to all rank it pretty high.
Yeah.
Right before the curve. We're going to have to...
So... I was thinking to do later to the city council president. Where they're letting her know what is the solution about creating a peace committee and the reason why. And create one. And to work, you know, to find out how we can deal with the speed in our community and the whole city. So instead of just having for the Clark, having for the whole city so that we can open the city. They need new committee for their whole, for their whole community so that anyone cannot play in conjunction with the mayor and with the person.
Community members, DPW, DPW, Planning Board, Engineering Department, and Martin's...
Yes.
The other thing that this letter mentions is that spring 2020.
Yeah, they...
When we do this?
Yeah, yeah.
It's part of the finalization of the current redevelopment of Clark Street, that the entire length of Clark Street be restripped with white curb lines to reduce the parent width of the travel. So that's an immediate measure.
Yes. But it's, it's really good. What I suggest to do in our, the committee at Pudo, I'm going to recommend to create a committee to, after how, that we have in our city, other current addresses to the mayor and the council. And then when, my plan is after I send that and I get the response from the vote, so then we can remove it from the agenda. So, okay? I'm going to do that. So, again...
To council president?
And the mayor. Because we're going to create a committee. Probably the, the mayor will appoint some of us, the members. So you didn't have, you said at the last meeting, Consul Derby said, probably you're going to remove without prejudice the ordinance that is with the car cycle.
Yeah, right, I mean, we're at least going to discuss it.
We're going to discuss.
Wait, before I move on to that? Before I move on to that? I just wanted to add that I did get, I live off Clark Street, so I'm on a text group on Clark Street Concerned Citizens. And I got, I just want to put on the record that I did get a flurry of concerns about the speeding and kind of a feeling of lack of action on the part of the city. So it feels really good that we're going to hopefully make this committee and I'm sure members of that committee will be happy.
Yeah, we'd definitely prefer having people from that, from that factory. And...
Get used to the speed of the city. Which we might have speeding, speeding concerns, but the speed of government is not...
Yeah. Probably you can talk to them about the solution.
We know that, yeah. I'll go, I'll, I'll share that. I'll go off the record, I'll, I'll tell you something.
Anything else you guys want to add about the speeding and the pedestrian safety review? I just want to keep adding the agenda. But I mean, I, we can, I don't have any objection to remove the car cycle restriction proposal. I don't have any...
I don't either, really.
We can...
At this point, I don't, I think that was a one-off. And I don't, and if we remove it without prejudice, then we can always just...
Because they can pay any, yeah.
I don't think that we're looking at an influx of car cycles going to do the same thing since they're banned from the bike path. And just, we don't, we don't have the infrastructure to support.
I will take a motion to remove the car cycle restriction also without prejudice. Any further discussion? Does it favor? And I was working on the language of the outdoor event policy. I really believe this still really extends, is to wash. It's kind of confusing too. It's confusing because what Consul Derby brought in the past about different events and how open space we have, they're being owned by property, private property, private entity, so they can do whatever they want and the ordinance is not going to affect them.
Right. I mean, if you literally have the same event happening...
Next to each, next to each other.
And one would have to go through these 10 pages of stuff.
And the other one wouldn't do anything.
So the equity is not there.
And I get the intent of, of the ordinance, I get it. But at the same time, I, after I think more about it, I'm afraid the people there are not going to come here to...
To do events.
To do events because it's so hard to do it.
Right. And I think Bob had like aired it down a lot, right?
Yes and no.
Yes and, okay. So, I mean, because I'm not opposed to saying, hey, listen, if you have, and make it citywide, applicable to everybody, not just on city property. But if you're going to have an event that where you're going to know you have over 150 people...
And this is one more. My plan is to remove it without prejudice too. And let Consul Sarah to do something simple.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we can, we can work together with the police. And it's fair for everybody.
Something simple and something that is...
It's fair.
Across the...
And that's why I say fair.
What would be a fair part of this?
This is only public property.
Only public property.
So like if you wanted to have, so for example, at the basketball courts, like JJ Duchene has a...
Over 150 people.
Over 150 people who are like, let's basketball tournament to memorialize...
With this, with this ordinance, is, you have to hire police for the event. Same with SOBO or baseball tournament. If you create a tournament and that tournament have more than 150 people...
And it's on public property. But at the same time, let's just, let's do a hypothetical here. So at the same time, the JJ tournament's going on right there. If Williston was having a track and field event at their...
They have 2,000 people.
Literally next door.
And no wonder, 2,000 people there.
They could have 2,000 people and not have to do anything.
Yes, that's what is unfair.
So, and that, to me, was a glaring like, maybe this shouldn't just be relegated to public property. If this is a, you know, if this is a big deal, let's figure out how to make it universal. So if anybody has a big event, then we say, in the city, if you have a big event, these are the things we should do. And make it so it's not private, you know? So like, we don't want, we don't want to discourage things like no law. And, but, you know, but we also want to make sure that they're safe, like for Friday. And both of those things have been going on and have been coordinated completely. Like there's no ordinance.
No ordinance.
But they've been doing it and they, and they've done it right. And they, and they did it right because they had to go through the process of working. And we had to. So it's going to be interesting to see. I mean, I think we can make this simple.
And that's, and that's what I'm trying to propose.
Yeah.
You know, remove it without prejudice. Do something simple and then bring it back.
For... And I mean, and we, like...
Because, because at the end of the day, I can tell you, we're going to eliminate maybe 95% of the language. So it's going to be a totally different ordinance that we have in front of us. It's simple and is easier for everybody just to remove it and do something simple. Do you agree?
I do, I mean, because this is really...
So I will take a motion to remove without prejudice.
That's all that for just a... Many pages.
I will take a motion to remove the proposal outdoor event policy without prejudice.
Second. All right, summum.
Second?
Second.
I can second.
I thought you could take that.
I can second that. Does, does it favor?
Aye.
The pass 3 to 0. What else do I have on the agenda?
Is this for the future review?
No, we, I combine it together with, with the letter from the...
Okay.
Because I, I think they will cover as soon that we create, as soon we create the committee, they can, they can discuss about that too.
Yeah.
I think we have, for the reason I think we have to combine both because one affects the other one.
No, I agree. The only thing that was under there, which discussed last week, it wasn't...
What?
The only topic that we discussed that didn't affect the other one was the outdated parking sign. But then you kind of...
Oh, no, but we are, yeah.
You kind of brought up just, that was a different topic, like spring.
Yes. Yes, and we're gonna do, uh.
Site visit.
Site visit, yes.
Yes, and we're, we're.
Yeah. And Jeff, so Jeff was, sent me an email, Jeff, and was asking about, uh, the parking stuff. And he wasn't, uh, so he said that he was, uh, the, he said, uh, just aware, I'm just aware generally, what is the parking issue being explored? So he's not, I don't think he knows about the, if there was a committee, which I didn't know, I just, that was something.
I will, I will talk to him.
Uh, but he said he's hoping to deliver the draft of the downtown plan next week, which has a parking component.
I attended the meeting, like, that's what I was wondering, gears are happening though. Cause that consulting firm, they did inventory of our parking.
Yeah, so I think that was it.
Okay.
And so, um, so I, I think it's out, so we can probably get that, um, for our next meeting.
I will get it, I will get the report for the next day. Cover everything? Yes, we do. All right. Anything else you guys?
So, um, I think I'm gonna, um, I'm, I'm, we can't talk about it. I might, I'm gonna try to put something in the chat, but we can't talk about it. I wanna have a line that is like potential agenda items we might be discussing.
Yeah, potential, yeah. Maybe next time, we'll speak time.
Yeah, right. True, true, true.
All right, uh, next meeting is March?
March, I can't make it.
March 3rd, maybe 2nd?
Oh.
March 3rd. March 3rd, so Tuesday. At 6:00 P.M.?
Yeah, 6:00.
6:00 P.M.
I probably saw the basketball.
You wanna say something?
About what?
I don't know, you look like you wanna say something.
No, I don't wanna say.
Are you sure? Okay.
That's on, that's a week before the table, table next time.
Yeah, so happy that it's coming. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Does the favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you later.